So I'll call the February fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen Town of Northwood Planning Board meeting to order at six forty present. Hal Kreider, Betty Smith, Vice Chair Lee Baldwin, Chair Bob Strobel, Linda Smith, Board Administrator James Burdine, Town Planner. Voting designation is all members present. We have minutes of January twenty-fourth to go over. Can I entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Discussion? I had a question on, sorry, go ahead Betty.
I didn't see anything on page one, but page two, the first, one, two, three, four, five, five butters were doubled.
Oh, yep.
Same names twice.
Good catch.
Wow. Okay. Okay, on that page two, I just had a question on line thirty-two, and there are three out parcels for required subdivisions. What are out parcels? The existing adjacent ones?
Usually we would consider those to be things that have already been carved out. So in the context of the Granite Street property, there are three small parcels that are either on Old Turnpike Road or on Route Four.
Okay, just had never heard of the term described that way, but makes sense.
Yeah, but they definitely are those properties, they were on the map.
Yep.
Why shouldn't it say three parcels?
I was trying out the wordsmith.
A little jargon you can change it.
Yeah. I didn't find anything else of significance. Couple of the ors and stuff like that, but I'll give you my copy.
Okay.
So, yeah, the only change of any significance is that the, on page two, the butters airlines nine through thirteen are doubled.
Yep.
That's fine. Okay, any further discussion? And I'll make the assumption that the second in motion, our floor, has amended.
Sure.
All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, those abstaining. Just some of those grammatical things.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. We have our first case of the year. Oh, boy.
Woo-hoo.
You should all have gotten application packets in your folders, and there should be two pieces of paper going around, one being a staff report, the other being an email from Jeff Aliva, who is the consulting engineer on this project. You'll notice in my staff report that I suggested that the applicant request and waivers, because this is a ten acre site, and the plans they've prepared so far are only showing the proposed renovations to Wigan Hall, which is just a very small portion of that site. I think that, yeah, Jeff will make the case for only needing to show that site because the remaining nine and a half acres or so aren't going to be changed in any way. So I just wanted to make sure that either we had something that showed the whole site or they requested the necessary waivers for the submitted site plan. So his attached email is essentially requesting the waiver that I told him to request. I think he also commits to addressing some of the minor changes that I identified and bringing those plans. So hopefully I will be receiving an electronic copy prior to the next meeting. If not, he can talk about whatever changes be as made at the time.
Well, I have one comment, and it's just me as a personal preference. I'm waiting, I forgot to ask.
Go ahead.
I'm always wary about plans that are only of the part of the site. I understand what they're saying, that most of the site is not affected, but it's very hard for me to put this in perspective without at least some outline of, so.
Sorry Gary.
Where are we and, you know, where does this fit in with the overall, overall site? And I have to say, I guess I'm not familiar enough with Coe-Brown to know the names of the buildings, so I don't know really where this even sits.
Okay, I will ask Jeff, when he makes his presentation, to at least have one image that he can show you.
Even if it's just a picture.
You're describing it, if you're on Route Four heading west, I believe it's the last building on Coe-Brown's property on the left.
No, on the right.
On the right.
It's the last.
Headed west.
Headed west.
Headed west, yes.
It's on the south side of Route Four.
Oh, well, it's on your left.
Yes, on the left.
You're looking straight at the front of the building.
Yeah, I just mean if you're, if you're facing the property, it's all the way to the right.
Yes, yes.
Is that easier? Okay, I was just thinking driving, because I only see it when I'm in the car. I don't park and get out, but I guess most of you probably do.
Hal brings up a good point, though, because my recollection, putting on my old man at the planning board, was when they were here for, Coe-Brown was here for a site plan review of four, five, six years ago. I can't remember exactly what they were proposing, but it was on the, the north side of Route Four. Oh, the ball fields, oh, the, the road, the access road.
Right.
That, at that time, I think I was chair, I expressed some irritation that this was being proposed without a master plan of the site, and that we had requested a master plan, and I can't remember when.
Well, in my mind, this falls sort of in the category, or similar to when we say, okay, like the previous case, they're subdividing off three lots here, and they got thirty acres over here. I don't think we need to make them map the contours to every two feet for all that other stuff, and this is sort of the same way. I don't think we need a real detailed plan, but we need to be able to see where does this fit, I think, into the overall scheme of things, just so we're not missing something. Because it looks to me like they're taking the bus lane, but maybe that's down further.
Yeah.
I mean, I just don't know.
But I think, can we check on that, those records for that, the access road application, just to see where we stood with the master, a master plan request? Because if.
I think it was requested, I don't think it's ever come forward.
Yeah, I think it was requested as well. I think they, there was discussion about it at an even prior application.
Well, there was a fairly comprehensive plan that was done at the time Smith Law was put in.
Yeah, maybe they can just copy that and just highlight.
As long as we have something.
But that's a different parcel. I believe the parcel on the south side is a different parcel of Lingon. Are you looking for the entire campus?
That was my intent, was my understanding, is that this was being, both the access road, mainly because that was such an impact, the access road was done separately from or outside of a master plan, and that made it difficult to do some analysis for what they wanted to do with the plan of the conservation, with the upper ball fields, the athletic fields, the lower athletic fields, kinds of things. And yet here, again, we're looking at adding classrooms, which I don't have a, haven't done many analysis of it yet, because I just got it, but it would be helpful to have an idea of where this is going for the overall plan of campus.
Mm-hmm.
Because this is on a very dense site.
So I will tell Jeff that at the very least, the board would like something as part of the plan to and/or as part of his presentation, providing context for where this building is on the site, and that we want, we staff are going to be looking into the file in a prior case where we had requested a master plan to see what exactly we asked for and whether we ever got it.
Yeah, that would be hard. The intent, at least my intent in asking that is to, is not to crack the whip on them to say, you promised us a master plan. It's more to say, I know we've had discussions about a master plan, I can't remember where those discussions went, whether we requested it and they said no, or whether we discussed it or implied that we would like it.
Well, the two, I think the way the Jonah, or the site, site plan regulations are structured, you would have the right to demand an overall plan of at the very least this parcel.
Okay.
So if that's something that you feel strongly about, that can be part of the discussion, either first for completeness, or second for granting of the waiver.
I'm not there yet, but let's.
But that is, that would be the process if you wanted to insist upon something like that as part of the application package.
Let's, let's see where the prior site.
I'll do some research, but I'm giving it some thought. I'm remembering there was discussion at the time, because there has been a long range plan of eventually doing a building, another building over where the parking lot is, and I think that was kind of what was being said at the time, once we know where we're going with it, more would be forthcoming, and I'm sure they have short-term and long-term plans as far as the campus itself, that they may be willing to provide some information on.
And the only, and I haven't read your analysis or anything, the only other thing I'm wondering about is shoreline protection.
I don't believe they're in it, and in any case, they are not getting closer
Okay.
to the water. They are supplementing the building footprint, but they're doing it in a few strategic areas, so the building gets now closer to the road, and it gets now closer to the water.
James, did you actually discuss with them the, the building layout and stuff? Because I'm a little bit confused about drawing one, L1 versus EC1. EC1 says existing conditions, and it shows a sort of oddly shaped building, and then right in the middle of, on L1, right in the middle of that, what they label as the existing building, they have it labeled as proposed new addition.
It looks like if he.
It's the outline is the proposed new addition, the dark outline is the proposed new addition, and the inner line is the.
There are interior lines that I believe are depicting the current footprint, so you can see what is being expanded.
If you look, compare the building footprint on EC1, and with the hatched interior line of the building footprint, you can find the exact same building footprint on L1, but it's not the hatched outside lines, it's the single gray.
But then why do they label that odd shaped thing that looks like the same on EC1 as the proposed new addition? That's what's confusing me.
The difference between the two is that, is the hatched diagonal lines. That shows the exterior of the building.
Of the new building.
Yes.
Yes, that's the exterior of the new building. This is the exterior of the current building.
Right, so why do they label this, which is the new building?
It's just a note. It's just a note.
So I'll, I'll also suggest that we try and walk you through that proposal, and that we look at some of the hatching that's going on on that, or the shading, or the labels or something, to make that a little bit clearer as to what's existing and what will be new.
Yeah.
I've been cheated. She didn't get the mini plans.
No.
I'm trying to unfold this thing without getting the mic in.
Take, take Joe's.
I'll take Joe's. Okay.
Hey Bob, related question.
Sure.
I mean, I'd love to see all the architectural details and stuff like that, and the detailed floor plans, but is that really part of our purview?
For architectural appearance, it is.
Well, I don't know about the interior floor plan, but for the exterior.
The exterior is.
That building's been changed from original.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, good.
Other questions?
No, this looks pretty good, it's very interesting. So we can sort of leave these at our leisure then?
Yep.
So is the whole building going to be one level now?
I couldn't figure that out, I was going to just study it some more.
Yeah.
Just looking at the elevation.
Study it some more, don't talk about it tonight.
Yeah.
At least not during the public meeting.
Yeah, then we can ask some questions.
If you don't mind.
Yeah, okay, well, it looks interesting.
Okay, next item up is internal business. Unless you need a minute to record some notes?
Good.
You're good, okay. I don't want to get too far ahead.
Thank you.
Sure. Try to pay some, some attention. We have a representative to the Stratford Regional Planning Commission, I guess his timeframe is, or his board appointment is up?
I believe Scott's appointment expired in 2018. Typically, we say you serve until a replacement has been appointed.
Okay.
You're not kicked out the door the second the clock turns. And I believe Victoria Parmally's term will expire in March or April of 2019.
Okay.
What I would suggest is.
When does Scott's expire, in March of 2018?
Probably, yeah, April of 2018, so.
I thought we had a different date than March.
Okay.
I thought we might have had on our records that it was in the fall, but.
I couldn't remember myself, but not complaining, I'm just curious.
Nonetheless, we can't, we don't want to go past three years, so if there was an error made, I guess he wasn't notified, he came in and he spoke to me and he said that, and I said, well, we'll get it on the agenda.
Yep, okay.
So I would suggest that you make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen to appoint him for a three-year term through April of 2021, and then we can get him back on track. Excuse me.
Okay.
And that way, and James brought up, that way the terms will be staggered.
Right, thank you. That's what I was wondering. Anybody have any discussion?
No.
About it, okay. So I would entertain a motion to appoint, no, that wouldn't be right, because it's not our authorization. To make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen that they appoint Scott Martin as Northwoods representative to the Stratford Regional Planning Commission for a three-year term ending in April 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, those abstaining, okay.
Bob?
Yes?
I have a related question.
Okay.
Very peripherally related, but nonetheless related.
Doesn't matter.
At one of our meetings, we discussed getting new website access for the property records and the tax maps and tax lots and stuff like that, and it just reminded me, we, we used to have it through MapGeo, and, so what's the status of the new system?
Well, the status of the new system is the, it had, the request has to go to the Board of Selectmen, which I am hoping to do in, I couldn't get on this pass agenda because it was too full, but typically that would occur after the budget is passed, but I think because we have funds from last year tied to it, I think they will likely move ahead with a purchase order for it, and.
Okay.
I did communicate with Tim from Cartographics a week or two ago, and he said it basically takes, once they get the go-ahead, about thirty to sixty days to get it online, so I'm hoping to move forward with it at one of the earliest Selectmen meetings in March, I just don't know when that will be because of the election.
Okay, good.
I don't know when their next, you know, when their March meeting will be.
That said, SRPC's contract with the town expired in October, November, December, somewhere in there for MapGeo. We have not been diligent about removing the town's information from MapGeo.
Well, I hesitated bringing it up because I use it quite a bit, and I thought, well, maybe we already have it, but we don't, so if you could just sort of forget I even mentioned it, I would appreciate it.
It's not high on our GIS planners list of priorities to remove Northwoods information from.
That being said.
MapGeo.
We have to remember the disclaimer that what is on MapGeo will not necessarily be up to date.
Good enough for me.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's very handy.
Let me see, I could still manage to get around pretty well on GPS that is four years out of date, so. Our navigation system is four years out of date, anyway.
I may or may not have taken advantage of it when I was writing my staff reports.
Or making me a butters list, or.
Saved me time pulling stuff into ArcMap.
Yeah, okay, well.
Okay, other items for internal business before we get into signing files or signing plans?
I've got one. The Town of Northwoods Hazard Mitigation Plan expires in July of 2019, so we will be updating it. That is done via a grant from NH Homeland Security to SRPC. I will be the consulting planner on that, since I have some familiarity with the town. So I've already reached out to Bob Young to start working on that process, and we are planning for our first meeting to be here on March fourteenth, starting at five o'clock, so that I can combine trips and just stay through until Planning Board.
Is the public welcome at that, or is that a closed meeting?
All of those meetings will be open to the public, the public is welcome to attend, and since we have had some staff turnover since the last update, I know Bob was hoping that we could get some regular volunteers from various boards, the Select Board, Budget Committee, Conservation Commission, Planning Board, what have you, who may be willing and interested to participate.
Okay, sounds interesting.
It actually is.
So I sent him a tentative agenda at the beginning of the week, I think he's out this week, so he'll probably be circulating that and starting that notice process next week sometime.
An interesting aside, one that I was meeting with FEMA to discuss the, or to be presented with the, or the flood plan.
New rate maps.
The new flood maps, and not expecting anybody else from Northwood, Bob Young came in and introduced the two of us to the FEMA engineer as the old guard of Northwood. Since both of us have been around for a while.
Yeah.
Anyway.
I'm hoping those maps will be available at least in a preliminary stage.
The only change we saw on them is that there were like three properties that were moved out of the flood zone.
Okay, so it's getting smaller, not getting bigger.
Yes, yeah, exactly.
And I know that's really only impacting the stuff around Lucas Pond, because the lakes and the flood plain around them are in the wrong watershed, so they weren't updated.
Yeah, right. And I think the only, the only, well, doesn't matter, we can talk about that afterwards.
The pond has its own watershed?
So the project was to update all of the flood insurance rate maps for the Salmon Falls Piscatacua watershed, everything that flows into the Piscatacua River, so two-thirds of Northwood flows into that watershed, about a third of it flows into the Greater Merrimack watershed, so that part of the town didn't get an update. Makes it that much tougher from a zoning perspective, we're going to have to update things a couple of times, but hopefully if those things are finalized, we can do that as part of our zoning updates for next year to refer to the new maps, and there was a new model ordinance released. So I'm sure that will be a very easy recommendation to come up with for the Hazard Mitigation Plan, but it's also something we'll take care of here.
Anything else?
I have an item, if you will.
Yeah, I'm done.
Oh, go ahead Linda. Oh, go ahead, Linda.
You can go ahead if you'd like.
Well, I want to mention something and if I'm going too far, stop me.
Okay.
The site plan for the development with the outlots or whatever the heck you call them.
The subdivision plan for Grand Street.
I'm expecting that there'll be some discussion on the cul-de-sac and things like that at the next meeting. And I'm wondering if we can request additional research at this time or whether we need to wait until the meeting to have that discussion.
I would prefer to wait until it's an agenda item for discussion to request anything additional.
Perfectly fine.
They should be coming prepared to discuss their requested waivers, at least they indicated that they would be at that meeting, and that includes a waiver for the length of the drive.
Yeah, okay, then let's wait, yeah. Well, I guess we have to wait. We don't want to discuss it without it on the agenda, so.
All right, go ahead, Linda.
Let me just save that.
Sure.
I'd like to inform the board that the proposed Planning Board amendments will not be going on the ballot this year. Not in a position at this point to discuss it, but I did want the board to be aware of it. I will say that Chairman Bob, James and I will be meeting with Town Council and the Board of Selectmen next Tuesday. They have not had an opportunity to discuss it. It's a legal matter and when we have more to tell you, we will tell you.
Update at six, I guess, huh? Well, eleven.
No. No, this body does not see eleven o'clock, eleven PM very often, but yeah, I understand the intent.
Okay, enough said.
Yeah. Okay. The DOT data gathering bit that the board gave me authorization to fill out last meeting, I have not gotten it out of my packet, so I will put it in a more secure place if I actually access it.
A more noticeable place.
Yes, a more noticeable place. Well, it was in the, I put it in the wrong notebook.
Well, we still want you to do it, Bob.
Yeah, there's no, I noticed there's no due date on it, so I wasn't, that it's overdue.
I'm not sure it's prerogative.
Do it. I have plenty of stuff on my plate right now that I will, that I will get to it.
You always do.
Yeah.
You always say that, Bob.
What would you do if you didn't?
I would be bored.
See?
Or I would be retired.
We're doing it for you, for your, for your good.
No, not the same thing.
Mm-hmm.
And I have signature plans to, are they ready to go?
Yes, this one is here.
Okay.
We can adjourn if you'd like.
Okay.
So moved.
Second. Just trying to keep things moving along, Bob.
I was in order.
Okay, yes, any discussion? Hearing none, we are adjourned at seven fourteen.